Okay, welcome everyone. I'd like to call the County Board of Education, regular session Monday, February the 3rd, 2014, 6:30 in the County Commissioners Auditorium to order. If we'll have a roll, check roll.
It's not on the screen.
Not on the screen?
Here we go.
There we go.
Everyone's present but?
Mildred needs to confirm.
Did she hit confirm?
Confirm.
Hit confirm, Brock.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, Ms. Counsel, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now comes our time for a moment of silence if we could remember all of our students and faculty, especially them going back to school, their safety, and remember the individuals that are really having to deal with the cold and the weather. A lot of them don't have heat and a lot of our kids are really struggling in families. And we also want to remember our faculty and staff as well. Let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. Alright, routine business. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, where would you?
I would like to, um...
Is it, look on the back, is there any special place you would like to add it? Is it after C or where? Where would you?
I would like to add it on page two of the beginning of our agenda book, under new business, item number seven, under A. I'd like to add it as number three.
Number three.
Uh huh. And it's our work week policy.
Alright.
Policy number 7.013. Number two of the policy.
Okay, so we got under Human Resources Committee update, number three, the work week policy, correct?
Yes. And we would also like to have it as our first and last read and it be recommended to the board that it be voted on at this time, at that time.
Legally, can we do that?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted clarification, that's all I ask. Thank you, I'm glad. Do we have any other items?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to add, I think Mary said D, so I'll say E, under new business, number seven.
No.
That's not right?
No, she had under A, number three.
So let's add a D then.
Okay.
D1.
And?
Proposed letter of support for a planning grant for the Northeast Regional School of Biotechnology and Agriculture.
Nursing.
Right.
Anything else? Do I have a motion to approve?
Same move.
Mark has made the motion, second.
Second.
Benji, seconded it. Any discussion? Let's vote. And it passes. And public expression, I think?
Mildred hasn't confirmed yet.
Mary confirmed.
Mildred.
Miss Mildred has to confirm.
You gotta hit it again.
Oh, sorry.
Alright, we got it. It's a learning process.
Yeah, I pushed it.
Alright, we have Parents for Public Schools, a Pitt County representing that group, so they would have five minutes, and Kathy Heron.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to mention that there are several members of the Parents for Public School Board here tonight. If I could just get you guys to stand up real quickly, I'm not going to introduce every one of you, but just so you know, we have a good showing here tonight of parents who support the work that you are doing in our schools. In times of shrinking budgets, it isn't always easy for this board to justify spending on your own professional development opportunities. We were fortunate enough to have Ann Foster here this fall, and she has co-authored a book, A School Board Guide to Leading Successful Schools, Focus on Learning. We were really pleased that she wrote the book. It's a very good book and has a lot of good professional development opportunities and reading for the board. Our local chapter has purchased 13 copies and we donated those to Pitt County schools, one for Dr. Linker and one for each of you. We hope that they will go to good use and that you can use these tools as we work together to focus on the success of our kids. So the books are here, they have plaques in the front of them, and we just look forward to working with you.
Thank you Kathy, and for all your group does for us, appreciate it. Okay, spotlight on teaching and learning, Brock.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Hello.
Good to be back with you again. Have a chance to share some examples of the terrific things happening in our schools each day. First, I'd like to ask our director, our exceptional children's director, Ms. Robin Wright, to come forward with someone she wants to recognize for an honor they've recently received.
Good evening, Chairman Forbes, Dr. Linker Superintendent and school board members, parents, community, executive staff. It is truly an honor for me to be here today, standing before you, to recognize Susan Holloman. The North Carolina Exceptional Children's Council has nominated her, and she's been selected as 2014 Teacher of Excellence. Susan has been with us. Susan has exemplified excellence in working with students with IEPs that receive services from the exceptional children's department. We've received over the last couple of years, three candidates from our district. So that says a lot about the dedication and support of teachers within our district. But with Susan, she gives us 30 years of experience, 25 of which has been with Pitt County schools. Her role currently is the transition facilitator. So she works directly with our middle school and high school students in transitioning them post-secondary, linking them with resources and supports in the schools as well as to the community. So again, I am honored to have her to serve in this role and represent our district this year.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
What picture do we have up there?
I don't know what that is. Must be for the next people.
All I can say is with Susan, she and I work together and we have a great working relationship. And she's willing that we're not only given 30 years, but she will be 24 hours a day serving if a child needs it. And on behalf of the County Board of Education, proud to recognize Susan Holloman for creating excellence in the U.S. Thank you for all of this.
You did good.
Alright, we've got one more for you and some entertainment to go along with this one. I'd like to ask Belvoir Elementary Principal, Mr. Kevin Smith, and Classroom Teacher at Belvoir, Ms. Julia Lynch, to come up. And they're going to talk to you about a step team that was recently started at Belvoir as a way to kind of enrich the educational experience that those children are getting there.
Good evening to members of the Board and Dr. Linker. You know, again, I'm Kevin Smith, I'm principal of what I think is the best school in Pitt County, Belvoir. You know, in the, in the best community. I mean, Belvoir is a really special place. And I look forward to representing our kids there, doing everything I can for our kids every day. As, you know, I look forward to going there every day because we have awesome kids, great staff. Ms. Lynch is one example. She'll also introduce some other great people we have here. But one of the things we're doing this year, our theme is soaring to excellence. And we're really looking at ways to, how do we engage the kids to get them excited about school? In a lot of different ways, you know, whether that's through our glee clubs, you know, through art club, through, you know, our after-school basketball club. Any way we can get kids excited about coming out, to give them a reason, you know, to connect with that academics. And Ms. Lynch, you know, came up with the idea of a step team. And she's going to tell you a little bit about it and, you know, we'll show the video of their first performance. This was actually done, we did it in an evening event, and this video was actually done during school when we did it for our actual student body. But Ms. Lynch, would you like to show the video first, or you'd like to speak first, or?
I'll just speak since I'm up here.
Okay. I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, and it gives me great pleasure to stand before you to speak about the Lady Eagles. And we do have some Lady Eagles in the audience if you would stand quickly. The Lady Eagles are comprised of 4th and 5th grade students at our school who each tried out. They filled out applications and completed teacher recommendations for us. We had a very diverse population of ladies to try out and make the team, which makes for our very unique and special bond that we have. Our teachers, I asked some teachers to serve on the team with me because they are leaders in our school, and some of them teach the young ladies. I teach kindergarten, so the 4th and 5th grade teachers, some of them represent leadership on our step team. These young ladies are very important to us. Therefore, a lot of time and dedication is put into them, into grooming them, to become successful citizens in our community. This is not limited to discussions about hygiene, grades, leadership, bullying, stress, and just day-to-day, everyday things that we talk about that come up. We participate as a team, and teachers included, in team-building exercises. And together, this helps us to talk about our life, how we feel about life, how we see life, how people view us. And this step team is about teaching the whole child and cultivating a culture ready to and be prepared for our community and our world. So this is, I hope you enjoy the video of the young ladies at school. Thank you for your time.
Just wanted to point out the back of her shirt. Be still and watch Lady Eagles step. And this is a short video, about three minutes here. I was told we had volume.
Lady! Lady Eagles! Yes! Let's introduce our Lady Eagles. Five, six, seven, eight.
Brock, if we could have the kids come up and introduce themselves, the ones that are here.
We're here, yes, please.
We were also going to give you a chance to try to emulate one.
Mary, let's you and I get out of the way.
I'll do the, y'all work it, or whatever she says. Wonderful young ladies. Wonderful young ladies.
Alright, we have Lenaya Cannon, she's 4th grade. Asia Arrington, she's 5th grade. Stephanie Flores, 4th grade. And Malia, what's your last name? Ralph Wilson, 4th grade.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I have a question.
Ms. Waters?
Okay, I'll share.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, what in the world background were we looking at?
That was the, our climbing wall that was back there in our gym.
So it was painted to look like rocks?
Yes, ma'am.
But the chocolate chips were the climbing poles.
You're welcome to come out and try it out.
That is really exciting. That, is that something unique to Belvoir?
It's the only school I've seen in Pitt County where we had a climbing wall.
I think that is wonderful, thank you.
I'll be out there and try it.
Y'all are welcome. And I also left a "Belvoir soaring to excellence" button for each of you with Brock, so I expect to see you wearing it. Next, thank you.
You will, thank you.
That was awesome, thank you.
We appreciate that from Belvoir. Thank you, Kevin. Consent items, I have a motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Let's see. Mary, I meant, Ms. Owens made the motion, and Ms. Counsel, second. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Ms. Owens?
I've done it three times.
I know how to clear it, Barbara, probably.
You gotta hold it up to it, Barbara.
Probably hold it up.
Yeah, like a TV remote.
What is your vote?
Yeah.
It's yes.
Her vote's yes.
Yes plus.
So everyone said yes. Okay, new business, Human Resources Committee update, Delilah and Mary. Number one, second reading of Pitt County Schools 2014-15 academic calendar.
Mr. Chair, this afternoon, we had a combined meeting this afternoon, and Dr. Jackson will be discussing some of what we spoke about this afternoon.
Okay.
Especially when it comes down to the work week policy and some things that we have in place.
Alright, so she's taking over?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. As she stated, the Human Resources Committee met today, and of course, this was a schedule change based on last week's cancellation of extracurricular activities after school on Tuesday. So we want to go over several things, and the first thing we have is the approval of the calendar based on the last recommendations that was made by the Board to go back and look at and consider. We did make a change, so if you turn to your calendar and the color copy, and the change that was suggested was in March, the month of March. We originally had the workday scheduled for the 30th of March, and based on discussion and items that were brought up at the last meeting, it was asked that we could move the workday to the 27th of March so that we would have one week that had four days and another week that had four days leading up to, in 2015, Good Friday and the spring break. So that is the only change that was made. And if you turn over to the next page, you'll see how it affected the calendar as a whole. It shortened the third nine weeks to 44 days, but added on to the fourth nine weeks, 47 days. And in looking at it, that is a busy time, we have a lot of testing and different things going, so it does add an additional day on to the fourth nine weeks. So that is the first item that I wanted to present, and we would like to have your approval to pass this calendar. This is second reading, so it can move forth so we can prepare for scheduling for the 14-15 school year.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mary made the motion.
Second.
Jill's? Jill seconded it. Any discussion? Let's vote.
You can't. Oh, it just came through.
Go ahead and ask him.
Delilah, is the last student day, is it a half day on June 11?
That is correct.
Good.
Yes, we do have that as a half day on June 11.
Alright.
Next, for our committee report, we did have our meeting on this afternoon, starting at 4, and we did invite the finance committee because there were a lot of blended items that were represented there. We did talk heavily about teacher recruitment and teacher retention. We discussed the teacher retention rate for the 12-13 school year. As indicated, it is 18%. We are about half, we're 60th out of 115, so we're about in the middle. Our rate did increase, and we're talking about, and in the committee discussed how we can better attract the best and the brightest quicker. So we talked about compensation and adding in, we already give a $650 sign-in bonus, so we're looking at expanding a lot of that. We are starting our recruitment process on February 20th at various universities around North Carolina. And we do have one out-of-state trip that we're attracting, going to, for 20 different colleges in Pennsylvania that has over 2,000 applicants there to look at our high need areas such as special ed, math and science, in middle school and high school, and also exceptional children across the categories with general and adapted. So we are looking at compensating. I appreciate the committees today coming together and discussing how we can better compensate and attract the best and the brightest. And also, we talked about, another big ticket item was Affordable Care Act, which is what brings us to item three, which is added. The Affordable Care Act does require a lot of changes that we're still working through. And one thing that we'll be looking at for the Affordable Care Act is the change in the work week policy, which is what you have before you, and it's highlighted in red, the one line that we need to add into the policy at this point in time. Because the Affordable Care Act does require for us to track all employees in regards to whether they have insurance, or whether or not they have, it is paid by us or paid by the particular area in which they work, which is not having insurance at all if they're part-time. So with the Affordable Care Act, basically what we have to do is track the working hours of retirees and track the working hours of substitutes. And we talked thoroughly in our committee about the financial implication. And this is, this is not something that we can just say we're not going to do. This is federal law, so we have to comply, which is the reason why Mrs. Williams asked that we look at this tonight for first and final reading and approval because we have a lot of information to share with our publics, which is our employees as well, and to get this process started. The Affordable Care Act has a lot of components to it that will affect us as a district because we could be fined if we are not offering insurance to certain populations. And we could be fined in regards to the number of hours that we allow people to work will cause us to have to take over their insurance, which was previously paid by the retirement system or someone else. So this is a very big law that we're going to develop the procedure for, but we need your blessing and why we wanted to push this process through for the work week policy. So if you look at the work week policy under work week defined on the first page, this is the one and only change, which gives the opportunity for us to begin our process so that we will not be fined and could be up to the tune of $6 million when we're looking at numbers, that we have your blessing, improve all the policy for hours of work for all types of employees, may be determined and/or limited based on the guidelines of the Affordable Care Act. That is the line that we're adding in right now. You should have a copy of that policy and it should be highlighted in red.
I got a question for the school board attorney to waive. Would we need to have a motion and vote on, to waive the first reading?
Right.
Second reading.
Yes. We're waiving the first reading, is what we would be doing. Right. Alright, that's what I want to make sure. Do we have any questions, Christine?
I still need some assurances that this will not affect long-term substitutes.
Okay, we have a plan for that. What we're going to do, we recognize that we need long-term subs, and our first goal is to have subs that are certified so that we can continue having the appropriate amount of learning in the classroom for our students. So what we're going to do is we're going to look at a staggered process. For instance, if we have a sub that is serving in a long term, they may serve that term, might have to sit out a couple of weeks, and then maybe go and serve another term instead of doing back-to-back long-term substitutes, substitution in one particular school. We would give a break in there so that the overall average for a year wouldn't put them above the required number.
So you can actually average it out.
Correct.
Was not aware of that initially.
Well, we, things are coming along, we're getting bits and pieces of information, so based on what we received recently, that is a determination that we made because we knew that the Board was concerned about not having certified teachers in long-term situations.
Right, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair? Any other questions? Alright, do I have a motion to?
Mr. Chair?
Motion to approve, sir.
I move that we waive our policy so that we might approve this policy recommendation immediately.
Dean Farce made the motion, and Sean seconded it. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Something's wrong with my thing. Yes, and confirm. Did you do it that time?
There you go.
Okay, had to get some.
So it passed.
Yes.
Now, uh...
Don't push it, mash it.
Do I have a motion regarding the policy? Mark's made a motion to approve. The other, that was a wave.
The wave, the second.
This is to approve the policy.
This is to approve the policy.
And Mark? And Mark made a, um, motion to approve the policy, and Mary seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. And it passed.
Got you that time.
We thank you very much for, um, approving this today so we can move forward to make the best decisions for our employees, um, substitutes and retirees, and we greatly appreciate the change in mindset that we're, we're working through with the Human Resources Committee because we want to get out there early regarding all the information that we're giving. We want to start recruitment early, which starts on the twentieth of February so that we can be in competition with some other districts to be able to recruit early the best and the brightest. So, that is our plan, um, hoping that we will be able to bring more teachers to Pitt County Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, Delilah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
The hard work. Alright, the finance committee update, Michael Cowan and Benji.
Mr. Chairman, uh, we met as a committee, uh, with a forum present on Thursday, January the twenty-third, and I'm going to let Michael Carrus through that meeting at this time.
Good evening. We, uh, did meet on the, uh, January twenty-third to discuss two agenda items. The first item on the agenda was a review of the comprehensive annual financial report for the two thousand twelve thirteen fiscal year. We had Michael Jordan with Carl Riggs and Ingram in attendance to, uh, present the different sections of the audit report and to also report on the financial performance and compliance of the overall school system. A few highlights of, uh, that audit was, first of all, Carl Riggs and Ingram issued an unqualified audit opinion, which is the best audit opinion that can be given on our financial statements. Uh, our audit did not identify any material weaknesses or internal controls or any other significant deficiencies over our internal controls as well. We were great as our low-risk audity, which in this day and time with the internal control structures of school systems and the risk is, uh, is a great accomplishment. And we also received, the board received, three financial awards for the fiscal year. The Government Finance Officer Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting, the Association of School Business Officials Excellence in Financial Reporting, and the North Carolina Department of Instruction's, uh, State Award for Management of State Public School Funds. So, I was telling Michael Jordan, our auditor, this was our version of the three-pointer. So, um, the audit, audit is an outstanding.
Brag on yourself.
I told you it's our, our definition of the three-pointer, okay? I was waiting for a little, you know.
Yes, I want to make a comment. I think what a lot of people don't realize, and you don't do a good enough job of tooting your own horn, but the Finance Office for Pitt County Schools does an outstanding job of managing the money very prudently, uh, very conservatively, making sure that every dollar is maximized, and, uh, you do an outstanding job. I most appreciate of that, and I think if folks would, would take a look at the safeguards and procedures that are in place to make sure public tax dollars are watched after and looked after in terms of auditing processes and so forth that the public school system has to go through, very different than other educational entities like charters. Public school money is very carefully watched and scrutinized, uh, to the nth degree, and that's a good thing, a very good thing. But people need to understand that main difference, uh, between what our public schools got through, so great, great job.
We, uh, the financial, the, the CAFR is the one that gets the most attention, but we are reviewed, uh, by the Office of State Budget and Management routinely, the Medicaid, uh, state Medicaid, as well as Department of Public Instruction. So, these are, this is just the one you hear about. There's a lot of audits and reviews that go on behind the scenes that, um, don't get the attention because they're good. Naturally, you would get some attention if they were bad, so, but this is a reflection on the board as well.
Yeah, and you got to believe that they're, when they come, they are looking to find something.
No doubt about that.
But with Michael Cowan in control, they're not going to find you, except the school board's chairs pay is cut in half.
See, I knew he was going in there with that. Told you that wasn't my fault.
It wasn't your fault.
Did it really happen?
Yes.
That's a good thing.
It's all for the children.
Tax dollars are really being used.
The second.
I move they pay me what they missed out on you.
In school board one oh one, a couple of weeks ago, one of the first things they told us was financial officer can really make you or break you. And we have Michael here. And I just happened to be.
Appreciate it.
I just happened to be, uh, part of the meeting with, uh, Michael Jordan, and really, he didn't have anything, uh, negative to say about the audit. And, um, it's very pleasing to me, it should be very pleasing to Pitt County to, to, uh, have such a report from a financial officer. So, thank you, Michael.
Thank you. The, uh, second item on the agenda was budget amendment number one for the two thousand thirteen fourteen fiscal year. Uh, the committee reviewed, uh, the increases, decreases, uh, in relation to, uh, that budget amendment. The, uh, the detail of the budget amendment can be found on pages twenty through fifty-four of the, uh, the board agenda. Basically, the, uh, the budget amendment number one represents an increase of approximately one point three million dollars that is comprised primarily by ninety-nine percent of that, ninety-nine point nine percent of that increase is coming from an increase in state allotments through the Department of Public Instruction. That one point three million is characterized by an increase of approximately eleven thousand four hundred in allocation for substitutes, a three hundred seventy-two thousand dollar increase to fund an escrow account at the state level for unemployment costs that's being mandated, uh, across, uh, the state, all state agencies. We received increases for our state allotted fines and forfeitures related to technology expenditures, uh, and approximately a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in instructional supplies and other allocations for digital learning, which, uh, is great for our technology department. A three hundred and ten thousand dollar increase in transportation, which represents the second half of, uh, this year's transportation funding. We have one of the highest, uh, transportation, um, efficiency ratings in the state, which are well over, uh, ninety-eight percent, as well as an increase of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars in internet connectivity, uh, for our classrooms and the internet connectivity within our schools. Overall, our budget stands at approximately two hundred and twenty-five point five million dollars per budget amendment number, uh, one, and that will take us into the beginning of the overall budget period of this fiscal year. So, this is kind of what starts the, starts the ball rolling for the new budget season. Just have an approval of that.
You need.
Move to approve budget amendment one.
Don't need board approval, but you want board approval.
Yeah, uh, Jill made the motion, would you repeat that motion?
I move that we approve budget amendment one.
I second.
And Benji seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Operations committee update, Matt and Christine.
Alright, I'll certainly turn it over to the, the brains of the outfit.
I don't know about that. That's a tough act to follow here too, so, see what we can do. Um, real quick, we did meet, uh, last Monday, um, January twenty-seventh, uh, for committee meeting. Really turned into just an informational session, um, but just wanted to give the board a quick update on the cell phone tower as well as the bus garage. Um, we do have the, um, the, uh, lease agreement for the cell phone tower in-house. Um, we've gone through it, we've actually sent it to, I think, Tina Smith, we've got their comments. It is going back to Atlantic Tower right now, um, with our concerns and comments on there, looking to hear back from them. One of the biggest concerns we do have with it is because it is a lease for over a ten-year period, which state law says we cannot have an extended lease over ten years. So, that's an obstacle that we have to overcome. One way to overcome that is actually to treat it as a sale of the property. It would still be a lease, but it would kind of fall into the sale activities where we'd have to put it up, um, advertise it for sale, say really for lease for the twenty-five-year period, um, for ten days and go from there. Don't think that anybody else would really be interested in a seventy-by-seventy square on the side of Epp School, but we may have to go that route just depending on how we work out all the details with that. Um, that's really the update there. Um, we are waiting to hear comments back from, uh, Atlantic Tower with our comments out to them. Um, I'm hoping that by the next board meeting, um, we're, we're actually ready to, to bring you something so that we can actually get this ball mov- moving, um, get them scheduled to get out there and get started, um, after school gets out. Are there any questions on the cell tower?
Yes.
Mark.
Ms. Stagni, what is the difference between the sale of the property versus the lease? I'd always been under the impression, once a piece of property is sold, unless the person that it's sold to agrees to resell it.
The, um, statute that covers disposal of certain property, um, would allow a lease of up to ten years. But the statute says that a lease over ten years must be treated as a sale, so you would have to go through, um, you wouldn't sell the property, but you would have to go through the bidding or auction or one of those, um, processes that you would go through for sale. So, even if you were to lease a school building, for example, to, even if they're used, um, and it's a lease for over ten years, you know, that's a sale, it would be treated as, uh, you would have to go through those procedures to see if there were other bidders for that property.
And we always could deny, I mean, if, you know, regarding selling, we always can deny that, so, that would take care of it.
Well.
Mary?
Yes, I understand that that would take care of it, but not only would, would another maybe sale person might want to do a bid on that also?
It's, it's a possibility. Um, Atlantic Tower's the only one that I know of that has ever put any interest in out there, and, and they've put interest out there for several years until, um, the board decided to kind of move forward with it. So, I don't know that, that another one would come in or would not, but the possibility would be there.
Okay, any other questions regarding that?
Okay.
Alright.
Bus Garage property, um, upset bid process is going well. We have, um, got the next upset bid, which was due last Wednesday, it was opened up this morning. Uh, Mr. Greer with the Nissan Place has put in another upset bid. The current bid is one point eight million and some change. Um, we will re-advertise again on Sunday, so that'll start the ten-day process over again. The next bid will be open on the nineteenth, um, at eight o'clock. Um, the next asking price is just under one point nine million. So, that is out there, the upset bid process is working, um, as we continue to get these offers coming in. Um, we have had some interest on LoopNet, which is the, um, internet-based, uh, advertisement that we have done as well, um, with this property. Um, we get reports daily on how many hits there, how many times somebody's viewed the property, and, uh, to me, it was kind of astonishing. We're up in the, in the five, six, seven hundred range, you know, daily as it goes through the process of people coming on, looking at this. Um, we have had a couple of phone calls on it, um, so I'm hoping that actually this might spark another bid for us as well and, uh, maybe put us out there and, uh, get some additional bids going instead of between two, two, uh, bidders. Not that two bidders are bad, but the more interest we have, the better off we'll be in the long run.
Mr. Moore.
Question I've got is, if the one point nine million is satisfied, do we have to sell?
No, no. If we get the next, the next bid that comes in, if we get another bid process, we'll start the bidding over again. So, we'll do another ten-day av- or another advertisement, another ten-day period for another upset bid until the, uh, bidding is stopped. At that point, we'll bring before the board what the final bid offer is, and then the board can make the decision whether to accept a bid or, or not accept the bid at that point.
What do we say the property value of, the property value was?
The property value, assessed property value is two point five, with the demo, it's two point two five. Uh, tax value is listed at, uh, two point nine right now.
Right at three. Okay.
And I got one additional question.
Mark.
Did we say there'd been an environmental impact study done on that property and everything was clean?
There is, we do have a, a, um, letter from, uh, environmental giving us a no further action required out there for any kind of environmental issues that have been out there in the past.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Benji, proposal planning, inertia and, uh, grant.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to pass out the proposed letter to seek the board's approval on. We got it that way, so I'm going to pass it out this way. What this is, and I think everybody on board is very, very, uh, aware that, uh, Pitt County Schools is one of a partner of, uh, four other LEAs, so five LEAs together with the Northeast Regional School of Biotechnology and Agriculture Science about, uh, Dr. Linker serves on that board of directors, and I serve as your, uh, board representative on that. Uh, Michael Cowan and our finance department is doing a tremendous job as, uh, the fiscal agent for that, uh, site, and we receive resources back for that. Uh, the school continues to grow and to prosper. It's at a point now, and of course, it is a STEM school, and Mary, you know, we talk about STEM education all the time, and it's, it's just wonderful to know that we are a partner in a STEM school already so that Pitt County Schools can claim that we are definitely part of the, the STEM program. Uh, they are at a point in time where they are ready to begin the process of looking into a more permanent structure for that facility, and in doing that, they're looking for planning funds from the North, uh, United States Department of Agriculture, and what this letter will do is, uh, show a, a letter of support from this board for the school to seek that planning fund.
Which is right at a hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand dollars, that's correct. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, so that we can move discussion along, I move that our board adopt this letter of, uh, uh, of support for the planning grant for the Nursba School.
Second.
Motion made by, uh, Benji and Ms. Counsel seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
How does this school right here affect my students here in Pitt County?
Uh, they have an opportunity to, uh, uh, to apply for that school and, uh, and, uh, be accepted for that school. Mary, it was back in a, um, an EPS meeting, that committee meeting that we had about four, five or six months ago. If you remember, Mr. Hal Davis was the principal of that school, and he came and talked to us about it at that time.
Yes, he did, but we did not discuss the fe- I, I need to know how, um, how does this currently impact the fact that I won't STEM and STEAM in my local schools, not in another county?
Right.
I don't, I don't understand how, um, no one's giving me, um, no one's telling me how to get the programs like this right here currently in my district. So, how can I support this kind of money going to another district entirely? I mean, I don't get this.
Uh, there, there, there would not be any money from Pitt County Schools.
No, I know, but this, this letter of support would be supporting the Department of Agriculture to give this school a hundred G's.
Correct.
Right? But I can't get a hundred G's in my district for, uh, for, for STEM nor STEAM. So, how can I, you know?
Yeah, I, I think, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I think, um, the best way to say that is that, uh, Pitt County Schools is one of a, uh, of, of, of five LEAs that support, uh, this, this school, and in supporting this school, then as it becomes innovative in such things as STEM, it gives us more opportunity to look at, um, the, an example of the way it's set up so that we can even move that example back into Pitt County Schools' district itself. In other words, I think it would be, um, I think it's a, a good, uh, linkage. Yeah, I think that's a good word, good linkage for us to, to be able to use it as, uh, an example of the way and manner in which we can move forward with STEM education in totality in Pitt County.
Any other discussion?
Just for clarification, um, it says that it draws students from a five-county region, that includes Pitt, of course.
That is correct.
So, we have students at this.
We do thirty-four scho- thirty-four students.
Thirty-four students from Pitt County.
From Pitt.
Correct.
How many total?
There is a, a hundred and twenty students, and it, it, it grows by sixty students a year until it reaches full grade levels, ninth, tenth, eleventh and twelfth.
It's been there two years.
Two years, that's right.
So, in, in other words, basically, if this right here, you know, if I'm reading it like I'm reading it, in other words, if our kids in Pitt County have an option to enroll and apply, they can leave our district, go here, and don't even have to come back. Am I correct?
Well, the school is part of, I mean, we, we, is part of Pitt County Schools, just offering more opportunities for our students.
Right, but I want to provide opportunities here.
We will be. We will.
It doesn't exclude that possibility.
They're further along in the process of doing.
I understand all of that, I understand all of that. But, um...
Okay.
I, I would like to see the STEM and the STEAM money come here. I mean, been asking for this, asking for information about this, any BS committees? Any BS committees trying to get a better handle on STEM even at, ask about it even at the elementary school level and to know that this kind of money is going, you know, helping our students? I don't see it. If it to be going, in other words, taking LEAs from my districts, putting it in another district. I don't like this at all, but, you know, I just want, that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Call the court, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Benji, repeat your motion.
I move that the Pitt County Board of Education go on record by approving this letter of support for the planning funds for the Northeast Regional School of Biotechnology and Agri-science.
Well spoken.
Okay, all yes except Mary. Comments by the superintendent?
Just quickly, again, congratulations to Michael. I've had the opportunity to sit through about 11 different audit reports from the auditors and none have been as enjoyable as the one last week, that's for sure. So it's, it's by far the best audit I've had to sit down and listen to and be involved in. So again, congratulations there, Mr. Cowan. Also, I know last week was most interesting, at least for the kids and probably the parents who got tired of the kids. I mean, my kids were tired of me, so we will be getting information out to, we're gonna talk about the principals meeting tomorrow, information on makeup days. We'll get that out to everyone tomorrow, right after a principals meeting. And we'll send the board a quick email so you can see what's going on with their makeup days. Thank you, sir.
Will we have a chance to say yay or nay?
Really just following what we have in place. You've already approved, basically.
Okay, I'd also like to congratulate Michael, really. I mean, we've been working together for years and years and all I do is congratulate you. But you do an excellent, excellent job and you deserve it and we appreciate it. Also, Parents for Public Schools, Pitt County, we appreciate all that you do for us and for the children of Pitt County. And it was nice to meet Robin Wright tonight, the EC Director, and Susan Holloman, appreciate what she's done. And one thing that I would like to say is I want to just make sure, because I've had some calls from some parents regarding discipline in some of the schools. Want to make sure that we're following through with a strong, strong discipline program that supports the teachers. When they send a kid to the office that has cursed them out or has been rude in such a way that is such disrespectful, that there is some action that's taken. And I do know we have alternative programs and so forth, but I just want to make sure that that discipline stays strong in our schools because I've heard some rumblings regarding that. But I do appreciate all that the staff is doing and I appreciate Dr. Linker and what he's doing and communicating with me as board chair. And I think you're doing a fine job.
Mark.
I would just echo a lot of what Mr. Forbes says. Really appreciate the work Kathy Herring and her group does with the Parents for Public Schools. That is a critical link to any school being successful or parents that are involved and working in the school. So that is a very, very, very important link and I just cannot thank them enough for the work that they do. Outstanding job. I do hope that we will keep, you know, the makeup days to a minimum and allow some flexibility by the principals for makeup time of their staff and using that 1,025-hour rule. I think that would be important to do that, so I do appreciate that. The inclement weather policy, I've heard some people say, you know, Tuesday was a waste, you know, we could've gone to school and so on. That's a hard, hard call for anybody to make. And I think we have a very professional crew that works in our system. Great decisions being made by our superintendent. Certainly, we don't want to be in a situation like was in Atlanta where people, or Birmingham where people were spending the night in schools and so on and so forth. And it's always better to err on the side of safety and so forth, so great, great job. And again, along with what Mr. Forbes was saying, I too have heard it at church just recently, this past Sunday, about discipline in the schools. That is a, just like parents being involved, that discipline is a key to order and instruction being able to take place in buildings. So I do hope there'll be a focus, continued focus on that. And much like what Mr. Forbes was saying, great job by our superintendent. Very good.
Christine.
I'd like to say hats off to everyone who was involved in the planning for last week. And I was kind of thinking Brock would introduce his guests in Spanish also, but not required. And I'd like to say that as the new chair of the operations committee, I particularly appreciate Matt and all the hard work that he does. You have jumped in at a full gallop and you continue to impress me. And that does not mean to take away anything from Michael because I love you too. So I would ask for those of you who have committee changes, please contact the whole board. I go to more committee meetings than just the ones to which I'm assigned and when they get rescheduled, I miss out. So I need all the help I can get, remind me. Thank you.
Jennifer.
I don't think we've had a meeting since I attended the Pitt Academy graduation, have we?
No.
No. Wow. Congratulations to, I think there were seven students that graduated and to all the parents and the family that were there and especially to Michael Lutz and the entire staff. I know that a lot of hard work went into all of it via them and the students and everybody. It was a very heartfelt and a lot of great things that night. It was really, really neat. So congratulations to those students and more good things to come for them. That's it.
Thanks. Mary.
I'd like to say thanks to Kevin Smith and the staff over at Belvoir. It's one of my schools in my district, which I'm very proud of. I'm proud of all of my schools, but, you know, to see young girls grow and develop socially as well as educationally is very important that we raise good citizens as well as good academics. So I salute Ms. Lynch and Kevin Smith for that. I also like to thank Michael and his staff for the audit, which I've been on here for a couple of years now and it's always been an exceptional audit every year. And not a lot of counties can say that. I also like to thank Dr. Jackson for her hard work. She's been working with this conversation package that ACA, everything, trying to get us more fine-tuned and aware of our responsibilities as a board and as a system. And we're trying to recruit the best and the brightest for our young people is what we're about. And I really like to thank her for her staff's hard work. I would also like to thank Matt. School, the snow days, I guess some of all of us got the calls about when these kids going back to school, they want to close the refrigerator, they eating up all the frosting Cheerios in the little mine, get them out the house. But you got to understand that we have people that are in charge here that go out and look at these roads and travel these roads and they put their personal safety in jeopardy to give us the right information so that we can make proper decisions when it comes. And I'm always gonna stand on the side of the information that's given to us so I can make a clear decision. And then we also have to understand that, you know, we've got good buses, but we don't have the best buses. And it would just be, you know, just harder for me just to think that a child is standing out there waiting for a bus and that bus broke down in the cold.
There was a stop sign over here.
You got a stop sign on there?
Yeah, yes.
Really?
Yeah. Mary, that's not a surprise.
Okay, I'm sorry. Got one more other thing.
Say, real quick.
And I also like to thank the EMS service, our local EMS. That's our sheriff's and our police and our emergency management services, you know, for working with us as a district. That's it.
Jill.
I didn't know I got one of them.
His face is big red.
I'm sorry, but that's it, but thank you, thank you.
He is red.
Do it with a smile.
Jill, you're using your minute.
I have nothing to add to what's already been said.
All right.
Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank Parents for Public Schools as well. They just do a great job, very active, very friendly in the community and very positive. We love them for that. I was able to attend a wonderful function at Cornelia with Dr. Linker and Mr. Robert Moore here over the past few weeks. I'd like to thank Cornelia for all their support of the public schools. Bishop Rosie O'Neill does a great job. I was honored to meet her for the first time. I've called on her help many a times in the past 14, 15 years and never actually met her. But I know Cornelia has never said no to helping people. I'd like to thank everyone for their response last week to the adverse weather conditions that we faced in Pitt County. We don't face ice a whole lot. And to build on what everyone else says, one thing people don't realize is that when you go out and venture in adverse weather, people get hurt, people die. And if you make the wrong calls, that's exactly what happens. And I'm not aware of one Pitt County student being hurt last week and that's an outstanding job. I'd like to thank Mr. Willie Joyner, if you saw him in the paper this morning. Speaking of a step team with his hype team, he's just done a great job with that for a long time as well as Belvoir Elementary. I'm glad to see it being started at an earlier age. And then finally, I would like to give some praise to our vice chair, Mr. Mark Witchard. If any of you saw his letter here recently in the Daily Reflector regarding school vouchers, that was absolute outstanding leadership. Very proud to be on this board with you, Mr. Witchard. That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Mildred.
Okay, just like to say I missed you all last month. I was out of the country trying to get back to America. I was in Europe. Weather was really bad in the US, not in Europe. But anyway, we made it back safe and sound, so that's why I wasn't at the last meeting and I didn't want it announced that I was out of country, you know, since, due to safety reasons. But anyway, it was a great trip. Just like to ditto on the hype program at North Pitt. They were awarded two awards on Saturday night too and I was there at the function. And those 17 young students made everybody proud that was in that audience. It was packed out at the Hilton and it was sponsored by the law firm of, let me see, what was his name? All of a sudden, it escapes me. Can't remember the name of the law firm, but he's a good friend of mine, so he'll get me on this. But they did an awesome job honoring people in the community that had made a difference and the step team had. Robert, the superintendent, I attended the school board 101. They were at 16th through 17th. It was an awesome meeting and it was encouraged that all our board members need to attend these meetings. And school board 101, you may have had it, but there's been a lot of new changes. So they encourage us to tell you if you haven't been in a while, there's a whole lot of new information that you need to know. And they told us to tell you to sign up to come and get this updated information because this would help our children immensely. Parents for Public Schools, I was a part of that years ago and thanks for returning to Pitt County. Where's the lady? Okay. I'm Mildred. I was on the initial board years and years ago and it was a wonderful group then and I'm sure you're gonna do some great things now. Thank you.
Wind it down.
Okay, my last thing is I was accepted. I applied to an emerging issues forum regarding education, got all expenses paid. First, they didn't get my email in a timely manner, but they put me on the waiting list, but I'm going on February the 9th through 11th in Raleigh to attend an emerging issues forum about public education in our state. All expenses paid by them and I will be speaking for Pitt County Schools.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Forrest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would like to thank everyone involved with the support that they give to Pitt County Schools. We're in a, we're in a time now where teaching in general is taking a beating and all of that that surrounds it. And I think with organizations like Parents in Support of Public Education and different groups that support that, I can see Pitt County Schools and this community really rallying around each other in support of what public education does and also especially the successes that we've had here. And then the other thing, Mr. Chairman, the leadership that you give, that Dr. Linker gives to our staff and the things that we've talked about in committee to stay ahead of the curve so that Pitt County Schools will be on the forefront of any of these proposed changes so our teachers, staff, and different ones can reap the benefits and hopefully lift morale so that we can continue to move forward no matter what some of the things happen 75 miles west of here. So thank you very much, everybody, for the support that you give to us.
Mr. Robert, three minutes.
For me to go over all of this, I would, you would have to do the stop sign. But I will say, Dr. Linker, you can see what you have to work with here. I mean, it's a good group of people. The meetings that I go to, I sometimes wonder, well, you do a good job, so what's next? And I am proud to be part of the Pitt County School System. Just like to highlight, the Cornelia experience was real, real good for me because when I went there to see 200, 300 parents that came out with their children to talk about school issues and that's where I think the meat issue is right now. We have them six, six and a half hours a day, but the rest of the time, weekends, they're with parents and guardians and that's where I think there's a lot of extra time that can be put into educating our children. So thank you, wonderful committee here to work with and I thank you all and thank Pitt County staff. I won't say anything else for Michael because, you know, I've told him so many times, he probably don't know what else to say. Dr. Jackson, and the stop sign is up.
Stop sign's up, I saw it. It's always.
Yes, and the best thing I can do for all of us is to say that I moved at this point.
Be good, Mark.
Sean seconds it. Any discussion?
I just wanted to mention, I remember the law firm, it's Clemmons Law Firm.
Clemmons Law Firm.
Yeah, Clemmons, C-L-E-M-O-N-S for the record.
Let's vote. You did good, Mildred.
Everybody wants to get out.
In fact, your votes gonna count this time.
Mary?
Mary. It didn't count?
Yeah, yours did.
No, no, what? The adjourned.
Yeah, to adjourn.
Oh, we adjourned, okay.
Good to go, good meeting.
Everybody get your book.